I didn't.
It's a little late.
There really isn't.
Come on.
This listener.
You think?
There really isn't. I printed it out, which is something to talk about. So I do.
I've been there for decades.
Okay.
Looks like it's kind of out like that.
Really looks like it.
Okay, good because.
You know.
The whole construction had to last.
Yeah.
Didn't look good.
This is.
Watch this.
My God, I'm all over.
I told him to bring them all back.
I know we've been here since then.
I know you lean away from them.
There it is. It's almost like we're laughing.
Can I go to this dude and be with that?
Is that how that works?
But they can't because the April.
Sometimes, no.
It's got to have materials.
Israel did some major.
Very big enough.
Yeah.
Home.
Me?
Well, yeah. We get designing that one up.
I mean, that's moving out of his space and.
I hear you. Yeah, I hear you. Even when I make some regular rallies and anything.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, your temper.
Troops.
He's like, hurry.
Hamlet, guy.
Right.
No annoying.
He's going to use the office.
Yeah. You guys, the ownership of any bridge that you want to build.
Yesterday, I put in the.
Robert.
Israel's.
Well, that seemed like.
I think so. I didn't go. He wasn't there.
I'm not digging down.
I wonder if he's doing that this way.
Well, I don't cover bridges either.
Ask him, Georgia, that's not a bad idea.
We did ask him about those.
The guy's got some respect there. They haven't brought it away.
That's what it is.
And then the next time you talk to Dan.
I'm asking.
Trying to figure out. Our follow-up from the staff. He's about putting the log in that inside door. So people can come in to the log.
I'm trying.
We could do that.
I don't have trouble.
I've used that office. I better count one hand. I've made me. I haven't used that office.
You go a lot. Look, that's.
I met people over there.
It's a good place.
No, I mean, I have. When I came, both Bill and I already had offices.
It's been a little bit hard. And I didn't want to let me.
Office hours, I can't. My calendar.
Aren't you guys ready?
Yeah, I'm gonna be there.
Thank you so much.
Because I have to meet somebody.
I don't know. She hasn't thought.
Because they know that. Because they would know that. It's a world. Let's not white.
I don't know. I think that's quick editing. Oh.
Then I'm gonna put in probably.
Tell my listeners to bring it done today.
So it's been a hard.
Just call me in order. Black Luke.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and the Tiberian River, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to today's version of the Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for indulging us in meeting a day earlier than normal. Due to budget areas, we had to adjust our schedule a little bit. I do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded, both audio and visual, and that this meeting is open to the public. Awards, recognitions, and correspondence.
I have one.
Approval of the previous meeting for April 6, 2022? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
No, I don't think so.
Please say no.
Road department might have something.
In May. Public input, now is the time for recognition of visitors who want to discuss anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none. Item number one, Umatilla Basin Watershed Council presentation.
Morning, Commissioners. Hey, good fun to be back here in person after two years of doing this on the phone. It's just a little more difficult. So, yeah, I did. I sent out some printouts and with the first thing I wanted to do is invite everybody to the river cleanup this Saturday at Roy Riley Park at 9:30. We'd love to have you out there. There's gonna be a tree giveaway and some good partners there. I shared the flyer and the email, so please, if you have anyone you want to distribute it to or invite, we'd love to have you out there. We usually have food, but coming out of COVID, we're gonna hold off one more year, so water will be, and we'll go from there and get out on the River Parkway and pick up some trash and socialize and enjoy the day. Hopefully have good weather. Secondly, I just want to give you a quick update on the bridge replacement and culvert project up on Stanley Creek. We are moving along for implementation next year. The design packet's in there at 30%. It's pretty long complex, but if you want to dive into it and take it longer, it'll come back around with the final stages later. Each of those are going through Tom, so he's seeing them, and we've continually gone back and forth on bridges versus culverts. So nonetheless, that project is moving forward and will be done in 2023 if everything goes as planned. With that, I included a match form where I wanted to request to use 50% of our annual support towards the implementation grants for the project. So with that design wrapping up here by summer, we're in the process of the fundraising portion of implementation for the project. We're currently trying to raise about a half a million dollars to complete both of those, the new bridge and the removal of West Berks Creek, those two fish barriers that are on the statewide priority list. That 5,000 just gets the ball rolling. You'll see the other partners on there in the match and stuff, and that is our money that, you know, it's our support from the county that we're dedicating to the project just to kind of get the ball rolling for the grant and fundraising process. So with that, that's pretty much all I have. We have some other, our next, I'm not gonna talk about our next project we're kind of looking at and rolling into. Tom and me are talking about it, and so I think it needs to get a little bit further along before I come back and start talking about the next bridge replacement or culvert that we're going after. But we do have a good list. There's about six more out there that have fish passage issues that, you know, really good relationship between us and the county where we go out, raise these money, bring outside resources in, use local contractors to replace these things and for better or worse, you know. Some of them aren't major infrastructure problems at this point, but maybe they could be down the line. The more our effect fish passage issues, so that's what we're working on. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I have a few questions.
Where's Stanley Creek?
West Berks Creek. Yeah, it intersects and it conflutes at West Berks and Stanley.
What road?
Yellow Jacket. Yeah. When you get up, right before the county canyon gets tied up there, it's the county home culvert that crosses right where Stanley Creek flows in, and it's a fish passage issue and an undersized flooding issue as well. So when we come in and fix this, it'll mitigate flood issues for landowners there. I know, you know, the last couple of years, y'all have had a couple just completely float them out. So we will be building the back of bridge similar to how we did in your neighborhood over in Athena. Not as big, of course, because that's a much bigger stream, but it'll be something real similar to that.
I think you and Commissioner Ruffin got lost up in that meadow woods.
Fire out.
It winds around.
You can get there. There's one way, one way out, but you can still get lost.
We thought we were coming down Yellow Jacket. We ended up at Indian Lake. We were taking their turns to her.
Mike, could you just introduce yourself in the record?
Oh, yeah, Michael Ward, Umatilla Basin Watershed Council. I'm not starting there. I went straight to the cleanup. Just trying to get volunteers. That's the main thing on my mind today. So, rub y'all in, you know.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Commissioners. Yeah, good to be back in person.
Yeah, couldn't agree more. Okay, number two, Camas Prairie Cowboy Convention permit. Carl's leaving me behind.
Senator Jensen speaking.
Tell your, Umatilla, or Camas Prairie Cowboy Convention treasurer, and I brought Carl Jensen with me, the Camas Prairie Cowboy Convention president. So we're here to answer any questions you guys have on behalf of the Camas Prairie Cowboy Convention and our mask gather permit.
The only question I have is I was told by Commissioner Wordock to have Carl come up to the front as well.
Hey. Why you standing up there? That's what's gonna happen. You don't have to get by with it. Not telling us what's gonna happen.
So do you have any questions? This is, this opportunity has been great for us. We expect to do, you know, have a lot of, a lot of people there to come visit our little community of you guys.
I'm looking forward to it. You've got a good treasurer. We know that.
Yeah, he is.
So you're gonna bring some credibility there, so.
I know. I always ask, ask, he has to keep me grounded because I'm pretty good at spending money.
I hope it's warmer than the last two events you've had.
Oh, yes. Well, I know, we were just today, we were, I was talking to my electrician to put some power in, you know, we want to get, we, we put the poles in and the meter bases and we need, you know, get inspected, and we dug the ditch and we can't get in there anymore. So now it's probably another few weeks.
Wow. Waiting for the snow to dissipate.
Yeah.
Anyway. Any further questions?
No, I just want to make him come up.
Yeah. Thank you very much, ladies. So requested action is approval of permit for outdoor mask gathering.
Second.
Motion, second, info discussion. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. Number three, planning commission appointments.
Let me do a re, let me do refresh and see. Sorry about that. I'm not sure.
Let me see if that.
Yeah, that's what I have to.
Okay. I guess I'll do it by memory.
Oh, sorry, I just exited.
No, it's fine.
So sorry.
Once before the board is, there have been a number of vacancies on the planning commissions, and the vacancies were advertised. They were advertised and the applicants have been interviewed and they were recommended, three of them were recommended for appointment to fill some of the vacancies. Those three new coming ones are Emery Gentry, Jody Hensley, and John Stanley. And in addition to those, there have been a number of terms on the planning commission that have expired and are up for renewal. So the request is to appoint the three new ones and then reappoint all of the others for the terms that are mentioned in the order.
I'd move for approval of each of the name applicants and.
It's an order number 2022.
So BCC 2022-024. So move. Thank you. Good motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Solid Waste Committee appointments.
There are two terms on the Solid Waste Committee that have expired. Both are eligible for your appointment, so the request is to reappoint Klaus Heine, and Mike McHenry back to the Solid Waste Committee.
I'd move to adopt order number BCC 2022-023.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm missing a paperclip.
I haven't.
Okay, Mack Oak Bridge.
I, yeah, I'll take that.
Okay, great.
And Tom can correct me as I go. This is a, the match, we've received 50% of the funds from the Oregon Opportunity Grant for the replacement of Mack Oak Bridge. It's an estimated 1.6 million. We're funding the other half through the county. There is an expectation that projects in that area will reimburse that fund. But at this time, because of one death and three accidents, the county's moving, we're looking to move forward to make that a safe crossing, and also very high on the list is the environmental ramifications of the continued use of Mud Springs Road.
Before we go too much further, did you?
I have to acknowledge the conflict of interest, however, council has indicated I can vote. So, is that correct, council?
Yes, there is a potential for a conflict, but with the disclosure, you can still why have you participate in it.
I approve for bridge replacement project and authorize signing of immediate opportunity grant fund agreement.
You mentioned Mud Springs Road.
Yeah.
Actually, I know, we're not gonna talk about it today, but ultimately, when that bridge is completed, it's actually Cunningham Road.
Well, Mud Springs Crossing, sorry.
But it goes, Cunningham Road is the dangerous one.
Yes.
And I think perhaps the road department might start thinking about potentially gating that at some point and blocking access to that railroad crossing. That's not part of today's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Get the gun. Number six, culvert pipe purchase. You step up with a Tom Fellows voting?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. What you have before you right now is the request to fill our culvert stockpile back up. The last, last two years, we've certainly utilized an awful lot of our culvert supplies. We, we did add to our culverts last year and found it getting rather low again, so we went out for quotes for culvert replacement, and we got three, three quotes came in, and Eastern Oregon Rental and Sales was the low quote for the, for the pieces that we asked for at $62,281.07. The one thing I will add to this is in the last 12 months, our culvert prices have doubled, and along with our bridge materials costs have gone up. Some of our lumber suppliers for bridge materials have gone out of business. So the, across the board, we're, we're starting to feel the pinch. Our fuel costs have gone up. We're gonna be okay this year. Quite honestly, I'm not really sure, moving forward, that, that our road maintenance isn't gonna suffer because of, because of these increases in costs. So anytime that we can keep supplies on hand is, that's simply buying us some time down the road if we ever get in a pinch where we can't buy these. So currently, we have this money in the budget and can certainly, it's not my happiest moment to spend this kind of money on culvert, but it's something we have to do.
That's not a guaranteed price for the rest of your, that's just on a bold purchase.
Just on this purchase, yep.
Nice to see a local company be able to source it and bring it in, for sure. I'd move for approval to authorize purchase of culvert pipe from Eastern Oregon Rental and Sales in the amount of $62,281.07.
Second.
Good motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And asphalt distributor purchase.
So the next item before you is the purchase of the, the used asphalt distributor. We were contemplating trying to utilize the distributor that we had for one more year based, because we didn't know what asphalt materials costs were going to do and, and what was, what was gonna happen out there in the marketplace on, on the used equipment. Unfortunately, when we went down to pull our, our other distributor up and start working on it, we discovered that the crankcase was full of antifreeze. And we're, our other distributor, the one that we're, we're going to wind up not utilizing is a 1977. The county has owned that since 1994. We've certainly gotten our, our bang for our buck out of that one. And so we immediately started looking and we found, found this distributor available. It's in the Pacific Northwest, which is, that's tough. You can, you can find them in Florida, you can find them in Texas, you can find them everywhere, but not a lot here. So we, David Doolittle out of Snoqualmie, Washington, has this one for sale. We contacted him and he, he gave us a, a bid price on it of $75,000. It was the only, only bid that we received on this distributor. We're pretty comfortable that it's, it's everything that he, he's advertising it to be. So we're recommending or we're requesting the board's approval to purchase this asphalt distributor.
I think that's a new color for the rainbow fleet, isn't it?
Well, there you go. Point, point them.
You can always tell if it's a county if it's some odd color.
We've done better over the years. Our truck fleet's mostly white now, Commissioner.
I, I would move to approve purchase of 2008 Peterbilt mounted Bearcat asphalt distributor from David Doolittle in the amount of $75,000.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. School district paving project.
So Lauren Stroud with the Kean Weston School District contacted me and, and requested that the county consider paving the parking lot at the grade school, actually, the, excuse me, the driveway at the grade school, not the parking lot. Currently, it's, it's a gravel situation and they really want to clean it up and, and make it a better, more usable driveway for buses and, and for the parents to drop off The, the estimated cost of, of this project is gonna be in the neighborhood of $26,000. Because it's, it's not a road use, it does require that the board give approval for us to do this project, and it, and it will be for reimbursement. The, the school district will reimburse us before that, so. So that's why I'm here today is, is to ask the board's approval to go ahead and do this project for the school district.
You know, I've driven that road many times, especially when my kids were going to that school, and no matter how often that they try and maintain that road, it just always seems to get potholes and washboard effects. So I think this is, you know, I love the fact that it's able to help the school districts with that, so.
If you'd like, we will put potholes in it just for you.
No, 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 please don't. I'd move for approval of the project for Athena Weston School District on a reimbursement basis.
Second.
Good motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Drilling and blasting contract.
So the, this item is for approval for the drilling and blasting of the Simpson Pit out by Pilot Rock. We went out for bids. We received two bids, one of them from Aggregate Resource Industries for $3.65 a cubic yard, and the other one from Rhino Works for $3.78 a cubic yard. We are asking the board to accept the bid from Aggregate Resource Industries as the low bidder and award the project to them.
Any questions? I'll go.
Second.
Good motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm gonna start charging you rent up there.
Hey, I had a few more things I could have put on here. So the next item before the board is the Thorn Hall Bridge removal. This is not, it doesn't have anything to do with the construction of the new bridge yet. Simply the removal of the, the old bridge from the river. Anderson Perry, we got enough of the design work done that allowed us to get, finally get permitting for this to happen. The, the goal of this is to make this project happen during the in-stream work window this summer, which is a very short work window, and we're, we're right up against our timeline now of getting that done. So Perry Johnson Plumbing was the low bidder on this project at $569,999.40, and the Public Works is recommending the Commissioners accept the bid from Harry Johnson and award him the contract.
This is one of those projects that, in the top five of things people talk to me about, this is easily in there in almost every conversation, so.
Yes, and I think this step forward is, is popular.
Yeah.
Some of them.
Second.
Good motion, second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fellows.
Thank you, Tom.
Juvenile reclassifications or something. Oh.
I have Western, Western, say, hold it.
Robert, did you have the hand up or you just?
I shook it.
Oh, okay. Sorry, saw the hand come down.
I said, like, like.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. I'm just here to ask for, to reclassify.
For the record, just tell you.
Oh, sorry. Dina Moreno with Umatilla County Juvenile Department. So I'm here to ask that we get, I'm able to reclassify two of our four vacant probation counselor positions. One of them would be reclassified back to a probation counselor assistant, and the second one would be reclassified to a probation, or to an office assistant, three. The board may recall, I think it was around 2019, I was approved for a fifth probation counselor, probation counselor. This position was supposed to work with juvenile justice and mild youth to get these kids get back, reentry back into school from programs that we send them to. Unfortunately, due to COVID, our numbers have dropped and the need is not necessarily there anymore. Maybe in the future, if this comes up again, we, I don't have the opportunity to request that position again, but at this time, that's just not a need that our department has, and I'm confident that we will continue to provide the services at the level that we can once we have, once we have staff. I'll be, I'm down four now. As of Thursday, I'll be down five, but we have somebody hopefully starting in May, and then we've got a couple of interviews set up already, and I can get back to four.
I think the most important piece of this whole request is the bottom left, where it says that the proposed reclass will result in a reduction of costs in general fund. So I want to make sure that that was pointed out, so. I'll move to approve the reclassifications of two probation counselor positions, probation counselor assistant position and office assistant position.
Second.
Good motion, the second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assessor maps conversion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hi, my name is Rachel Reynolds, and I'm with the Assessment, Gearest and Taxation. As you know, we have converted from GeoMedia over to ESRI with our parcel, parcel data. In that first project, they did not include the 1,132 assessor maps. So we're asking today to get the assessor maps moved from GeoMedia over into ESRI. We've got a proposal from ProWest at the cost of $24,788 to do this. I'd also like to let you know that I've already put in for the grant through ORMAP to potentially get this paid for with the grant, like we did the conversion of the parcel data. Any questions?
Did the price go up?
Uh-uh.
It's 24,788? I thought I saw a higher estimate.
I think I may have ran past you at 25,000.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
Good motion, second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maintenance payable.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. Uh, before you is a payable for tunnel lump or $6,127.38. Some of it is the new shop, some of it is just general maintenance items.
So, you know, we just heard, you know, Tom Fellas talk about the, you know, shortages and increase in costs and materials. That's, I'm assuming that's affecting you too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so is this to put stock on hand for future things?
These were just repairs that have come up that we've had to get parts for. We don't have a huge surplus of parts that we stock, um, just because everything is so random as, as it breaks, so. A lot of these that were for the new shop are drywall mud, stuff like that, so, for the walls. And then the, the other, the general repair stuff, um, was like masking tape and...
Or some B-Dets and stuff in there.
Yeah, washers, um, yeah, just miscellaneous screws. So it's just random stuff for different buildings.
Thank you. Questions? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the next one is maintenance facility installation.
Yeah, so I have before you the pinky from the bid we received for insulation for $10,473 from home insulation and that is to insulate the main part of the new maintenance facility and repair one area.
And how many, how many quotes did you get or did I see somewhere where you asked for several?
Yeah, this is the only quote we received. Um, I had two, two companies say too busy and, uh, the other company that I thought was going to get a bid in was a, was a Sprayphone and I didn't get the bid, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Littlefield, Under Sheriff, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Jim.
Uh, what we have before you today is a request for us to sell two of our surplus patrol vehicles to the city of Pilot Rock. Sometime ago, Chief Caldera from the city approached us and asked us if we had any vehicles available for their use. Uh, we identified two from our fleet that are equipped with police equipment and offered those to Pilot Rock for $45,000 for both vehicles. They've looked at them and believe that they'll meet their needs. We believe it's an opportunity to help Pilot Rock out. Uh, they, outside of this, they would be in a position where they would have to go out and purchase new vehicles or find them somewhere else. These vehicles that we're talking about will eventually be sold through our lease company somewhere in the United States, but if we have an opportunity to help an agency out here locally and they're willing to pay the value that Bancorp has determined that's fair market value, then I think it's a win-win for everybody involved.
Move for approval. Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, number 16, County Branding Recommendation.
I, I can handle that. Um, as you know, we put together a committee several months ago and it has several goals. The first, uh, which was to select a logo, a branding logo icon for the county of Umatilla. We went through several discussions, several, um, very active committee meetings. I do have to thank all of the department heads and the folks that department heads sent to this committee. It's been a, wanna, kind of, kind of a nice committee because it's been very active. Everyone who attends, participates and I feel really comfortable bringing this recommendation to the commissioners as the recommended brand for Umatilla County from the branding committee. The next steps are to identify policies and processes of using the, the brand, the budget to, and the application. What the time span is, is it five years for, for a transition, three years for a transition, so that budget will be put together. And, uh, moving forward, uh, we would like to look to this brand. One, because it's easily adaptable to all departments and so, uh, I would like to make, have a question.
When you make, say it's adaptable to all departments, well, there'd be an anticipation that all departments use a standard logo.
We will have a policy in place for the use of the brand, yes. That, Commissioner Murdock, that's the important part about this is consistency. The one thing that we've heard all the way through is the consistency use of the brand.
So is, is it, which one of these are we going with?
Uh, all three of them. It's a, the concept is the brand. That, what you're looking at, um, in some ways you use black and white, in some places you'll use color. And then in some places, um, eventually what you'll see is the, the department head, the department using it will also be included.
Oh, I had voted for number three.
So we have a motion, was there a second? Did you hear a second then?
Uh, there was.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye, thank you, guys.
I'm under protest.
It's a, it's a, it's a very active committee and I'm really, really proud of it.
There's a lot of chatter on it, so, I know that. Thank you for your work on that, appreciate it. Water Resources Agreement.
Um, I can talk to that. Um, what you have before you is a modified annual agreement with the Oregon Water Resources Department. In the past, this funding has supplied aid or paid for an assistant water master in the Milton Freewater area. In the last budget session, Oregon State of Oregon, in their budget included a full-time water master for the Milton Freewater area. And so with that, they have come back to us to ask for a, a, to continue an assistant water master but only to spend 50% of the time in Milton Freewater area and the rest throughout the county assisting in the different water projects that we have going on. I sat down with, with our counsel Doug and we went through some changes in that contract and to make it a little bit more user-friendly and user-centric. And answering any questions you had?
No, I think it's, I think it's good that we have a full-time water master up there in Milton Freewater. And Luke's been doing it at the assistant level, now he's a full-time, uh, actual water master, so. So I, I think that's good moving forward, so. Is there a motion in there?
It, it, oh, Doug, on this, on the pinky, it says review agreement. Should I just, the motion should be to approve the review agreement. Is that true?
Right, or if you want to approve, um, the agreement with modifications.
Okay, I, I move to approve the agreement with modifications.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you. Board Schedule.
Uh, what's before the board is, uh, the need to reschedule all of the second board meetings for May, June and July because of the lack of form for the regular scheduled dates. What the proposal is, is to try to get it as close as possible to the original date. So that's the reason that, um, the three alternative dates are proposed. One is especially when in June we'll allow for a late board meeting in the month right before fiscal year ends. So the proposal is to move the second board meeting to May 24th in May, the second board meeting in June to June 29th and the second board meeting in July to July 19th, which is the day before the NACO convention.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Act of Community Benefit Plan Grant. Do you want to take that one?
Well, it's very simple. They, there was one grant, not just the fire department. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Probably took, probably took longer to get there than you have a meeting, didn't it? Fair Housing Resolution.
Uh, what's before the board for consideration is the readoption of a fair housing resolution. Anytime the county is involved with a community development block grant, a fair housing resolution needs to be adopted and posted. And because of the recent one for the food bank, uh, we need to do it again. And so the proposal is to readopt a resolution which will be published in the ESR document as soon as possible.
The only question I have is, in that document, it talks about assisting other communities. That would be, at this, what we're doing for the food bank when we adopt it, that would fall under assisting. Is that kind of the definition of that?
Yes, I mean, this is primarily for anything, um, that might come up for the housing in the county. It's not just limited to the.
Not just limited to that, so.
No.
Assistance could mean a lot of different things in that, in that document.
Yes.
Gotcha.
CDA Contribution.
I move for approval of the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. Not, not that I'm not trying to hurry things along, but yeah, thanks for that effort.
Really, I think I was wanting to hurry things along. Uh, okay, I will take, take this one. As part of the conditions for the CDA or Columbia Development Authority to acquire the former depot that Department of Army will be receiving of, uh, $1 million. The possible source for that money will be the sale of a portion of the depot, which may take some time. To facilitate the transfer, three of the entities that form the CDA, uh, Umatilla and Morro County, the two ports, Umatilla and Morro and the CTUIR are seeking to advance these funds and will be reimbursed from the sale proceeds. The contribution from the county is before the board of approval. The three entities doing the, uh, payments at this time will be the two counties and CTUIR. Approval of payment to the CDA in the amount of $333,333 for contribution to purchase of depot with exception of reimbursement. And with that, I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second a quick question. You mentioned the ports, they're not involved in this funding process?
They are not.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion, a second, any further discussion? I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Budget committee appointment is Marila Now. Is that not correct? I agree for the appointment. Marila Now is the budget committee?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Supplemental budgets.
Morning Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County.
It's a hearing, public hearing.
So we're in the public hearing mode, I didn't do that today. So we, we are going to suspend our regular meeting and go into public hearing mode. With that, Robert, the floor is yours.
Uh, staff report for the supplemental budgets, uh, just a brief summary of the three that are before you. Budget Order 2022-43, Health and Healthy Oregon Modernization East Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $411,707, an increase in federal revenue of $25,000, an increase in personnel services of $116,877, an increase in materials and services of $12,067 and an increase in contingency of $307,763. Budget Order 2022-53, Care Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $143,500, an increase in personnel services of $131,500 and an increase in materials and services of $12,000. And Budget Order 2022-55, Public Health Reserve requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $1.5 million and an increase in contingency of $1.5 million.
Okay, any questions, comments? Questions, comments from the public? Hearing then, we will come out of hearing mode and go back into a regular, a regular session. And for the requested action.
I'll leave it to the voice.
I move. I move for the Budget Order 2022-53, Care.
Motion is second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Wait.
I think there's another one too.
I thought we had to do them separately.
You do, but.
Yeah.
Oh, it's good, 43, okay. Uh, I move Budget Order 2022-43, Healthy Oregon Modernization East.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I move for the Bud, to approve Budget Order 2022-53, Cares.
Get that one ready, maybe.
Not, we didn't finish it.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye. Budget Order 2022-55, Public Health Reserve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carry. Okay, Budget Transfers.
There are also two budget transfers before you this morning. Um, I will review summary. Budget Order 2022-54, Communicable Disease Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $1.5 million and a decrease in contingency of $1.5 million. And, uh, Budget Order 2022-56, Dispatch Reserve Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $40,000 and a decrease in contingency of $40,000.
I would move for approval of Budget Order 2022-54, Communicable Disease Program.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye. I would move for approval of Budget Order 2022-56, Dispatch Reserve Program.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that longtime mayor Tom McCann passed away over the weekend. Uh, not only was he a longtime mayor, uh, in Umatilla County, but he was also uh, the chief of police in Stanfield for several years and he was also, uh, one of our marine deputies for 15 years, so. He served a lot of citizens in Umatilla County and his loss will be felt far and wide, so, uh, my condolences to the family for sharing that.
Couldn't have said it better.
I'll second that.
All right. Anybody else they want to bring up? With that, we adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
And I appreciate the hustle.